Standing for the pledge of allegiance led by Dale Gaper and bet spoke 29.
Let's pray together. Heavenly Father, we come before you tonight recognizing that you are God and that we are not. And God, we're grateful for today that you have given us. And Jesus, you teach us to seek first the kingdom of God and your righteousness, and all of these things will be added unto you. So God, I pray for wisdom in this place tonight and discernment. And God, we pray how you taught us how to pray, Jesus. Our Father in heaven, hallowed be your name. Your kingdom come and your will be done in Popper Bluff as it is in heaven. And we pray this in your name, Jesus. Amen.
If you'll all join me, hand salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, Mrs. Kirby.
Councilwoman Horton.
Here.
Councilman Crocker.
Here.
Councilman Smith.
Here.
Councilman Davis.
Here.
Councilman Black.
Here.
Mayor Proton McVeigh.
Here.
And Mayor DeGerris.
Here.
Thank you. Disclosure of interest to any member of the city council may disclose any possible conflict of interest dealing with either any item on the printed agenda or with any matter discussed at a previous meeting. Seeing none, citizens input, each person in the audience may take this opportunity to address the city council on any matter which is not on the printed agenda. Seeing none, move on to workshop items. Item A, the city council review the final change order number five for the walking trails grant.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is a change order number five for the grant. It's actually a reduction of $2,086.50, and this will close out the grant for the walking trail from down to McLean Park.
No questions, I entertain a motion and a second to move this to the voting session to be held tonight.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item B, the city council review bids received for the purchase of a 30 by 50 workshop storage building owned by the city on Roxy Road.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we, there's a storage building located on Roxy Road on property we bought for Shelby Road. It's a 30 by 50 metal storage building. Instead of paying to have it demolished, we thought we'd advertise and see if it could be sold. We had three bids, actually one of them wanted us to pay them $2,000. One was going to give us $525 and take the building, and then there was the high bid of $2,000, they would take the building, which will alleviate our problem of having to have it torn down. I would recommend that we take the $2,000 bid.
Make a motion, move to voting session.
Be the August 21st voting session.
Yes, sir.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item C, the city council review bids received for Shelby Road Phase Two.
Counsel, Billy Cobb, I'm with Smith and Company, 901 Vine Street. I think you've got the bids in your packet. We had eight bidders, I think nine. Nine bidders, so we had a good turnout. We had a couple locals, one from Benton, Missouri, and then some from St. Louis and St. Charles area. So we had a lot of interest in this project. Parent low bid, or the low bid, after we tabulated all the quantities up, was Robertson Contractors here in Popper Bluff, so a local contractor, low bid. It's very competitive with the bottom two bids, if you have the spreadsheet, but it's well under our estimate. We were recommend, we set it up because we were worried about the budget of the TDD and where things would fall, and so we set it up with several different alternates. The base bid was just to get a road in, and it was eliminating a few kind of big dollar items, or that we thought were big dollar items. But what we're recommending, since it is in budget and the TDD has the money, is to accept the alternates. Particular bid item, our bid alternate number one is the pavement, the trail. So we were grading out for a trail. Just like on Shelby Phase One, if you recall, they graded out for a trail, and then it was paved several years later. We're saying, we're saying, go ahead and, go ahead and pave that. So that's, that's alternate one. Alternate two is the signal at Roxy Road. So there's a connection with the signal at PP Highway, a connection at the signal at 53, and then there would be a signal at the other crossing at Roxy Road. And then bid alternate three is a bridge, and then what it, what it would have done without this alternate is how PP Highway was constructed originally when it was widened, it kind of necked down at the bridge, and so that was been the scenario if we didn't have enough money. But we're saying, select that alternate so that we have a full four-lane highway from 53 to PP Highway. And then we, that bid alternate four, we hope, and we shouldn't need that, but basically that was something Mr. Boyers, when we negotiated right away with him, that he wanted us to place into the bid. He does have a spring on his site, and he was worried about damage, and so we added that. So that's more of a maybe later. It's not a very big dollar item, but we don't think we'll even need that. And then bid alternate five is just some unit costs. It's pretty inevitable that, in that swampy area, but it's, it's an unknown, is that we might hit some unsuitable soils, in particular around the lagoon area, where the old lagoon was, and so if we hit some, we already have a, a unit cost set up for them. That way, it's kind of bid upfront, and we're not negotiating some price later. It's kind of how we did that, so. So that's kind of run down the whole, whole bid tab there. If there's any questions.
I do have one question. One bid that concerns me is the item one, actually. Compared, I'm glad Robertson can think they can come in at 205,000 compared to the second, the next lowest bid at 400,000, almost half the cost.
Yeah.
Why would you think that?
Uh, well, there's.
What would be the reasoning behind that, they could do that?
There's two, there's two reasons. There's one, mobilization, demobilization, there's a, there's a lot of different things you can put in there. It's not necessarily what you might just think of right off the top, that it's mobbing to the site, and that's it. I mean, you put in your bond, your bid bonds, you put in some incidentals, I mean, you can, there's just different things that contractors will move around in different items. But the other thing that, with Robertson, if you know where their office is, that bridge is out their back door. So, so they're mobbing from, you know, 500 feet away.
Where the other ones in Benton, Missouri, they would have to dump it up there, is that correct?
Yes, correct.
Okay.
The other two Popper Bluff ones came in at 242 and 174, though, also, if you look across the top line.
Yeah, KJX, if you look at their mob costs.
So they're, they're not the lowest bid, but probably just because of being local is a big part of the cost.
Yeah, I mean, like you said, like you said, it's basically out their back door, as far as this project goes.
So here he answers, 174, uh-huh, and KJX 242.
Hope he can come in at 200,000. That'd be nice.
Yeah, I mean, he's basically locked into that price. I mean, he's locked into that price, so it's, it's, that's the price it will be. I mean, that 205 is what his mob price is.
So are you recommending the total bid of one, two, three, and four? Or we're going to do one, two, and three, see if we need four?
One, two, and three, we shouldn't need four. You know, that would just, you know, we would, like I said, we, we shouldn't need that, so I think we're just recommending one, two, and three, yeah, one, two, and three.
So I think that's just if they get into trouble, they'll come back with a change order. Isn't that right, on five? I like the way you did the spreadsheet, this is very helpful.
Yes.
And we have approximately $11 million in TDD, I think, something like that.
Yeah, there's a little bit more than that, but there's some reimbursements that haven't been submitted, so after the reimbursements, the, the city hasn't been reimbursed for, there's approximately 11 million for the project. So the TDD has enough money to do what we're recommending and still have a little buffer if there's some change orders, or if the unsuitable soil pops up, or, you know.
And we could possibly get started on this in September, hopefully.
Yeah, I think, I mean, we haven't talked to the contractor too much, but I think as soon as we get notice of award, I think they're ready to get stuff turned around and get started. They're actually here, if there's any questions specifically to them, I'm sure that they'd be glad to help or answer.
No one has any further questions, entertain a motion, second, move this to the voting session, be held August 21st.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item D, the city council review recommendation from municipal utilities advisory board regarding an amendment to ordinance number 7781 relative to the agreement between the city of Popper Bluff and Tandilus Systems Incorporated.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the only change made to this agreement is an increase in cost for the support and maintenance, it's $2,200. This increase is due to changing from a physical server to a virtual server. We discussed this at an earlier advisory board meeting and would recommend the change. Any questions?
No questions, entertain a motion, second, to move this to the voting session to be held tonight.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item E, the city council review amending the code of ordinances, chapter 210, entitled defenses, relative to conceal and carry and paintball guns. That's again.
Chief Whitley's going to address the.
Mr. Mayor and members of council, Mr. Richardson, the, as we all know, the citizens in the state of Missouri, and particularly in southeast Missouri overwhelmingly support our Second Amendment rights and the NRA, and that's myself included. My request for an ordinance change simply clears up our present ordinance to mirror Missouri State statute, which was passed by the legislator, legislature, then vetoed by Governor Nixon, but was overridden by the legislature in September of 2016 with an effective date of January 1 of this year. This certainly does not apply to a convicted felon or a full order of protection which is covered under federal statutes. With that being said, this is fairly simple, and if you have any questions, I'll try and answer them, or we can have our council answer them if it needs interpretation.
Make a motion, take it to the voting session.
It'll be August 21st.
Okay.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item F, the city council discussing the need to acquire purchasing room between the city of Popper Bluff and Houston Galveston area council relative to inter-local contract for purchases.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is a buying group out of, actually out of Texas. There are a lot of Missouri municipalities and counties in this group. The police department's at some point is going to need to buy a new voice recording system. They founded on this buy group quite a bit more reasonable than other groups. This is workshop only, actually Friday, Thursday or Friday, city attorney and city clerk and I were talking, that we may need to change our purchasing policy to reflect this in there before we actually pass this, which we can bring back to the next council meeting.
Is there a cost to be a part of this group?
I don't think there is. I know Pam was looking earlier and.
I don't see where it is, but there may be some administrative fees, I'm not real sure. Do you know? A cost?
Cost to join the group.
A membership fee or anything to be a part of it?
I don't, I don't think there is.
Don't think so.
I'll clarify it with my claim, I'm, I'm broke for sure.
Okay.
Chief Whitley, chief, what kind of equipment is this that will be available?
It's the, our incoming 911 calls and, and anything that comes in there at this.
Communication equipment?
Yeah.
Our system that we have now is what, 10, 12 years old, something like that?
Uh, I actually think it's 14 years old.
14.
It's, uh, it's getting antiquated.
But you could use this service.
That's a huge liability problem if we don't have those calls.
You could use this for other than just that, though, right? You could, for other capital equipment can be purchased through this organization?
Yes, correct.
Yes, I mean, in fact, the entire city could use it.
Right.
Oh, they can? Not just the police department?
Wouldn't be just for the police department.
Oh, okay.
Okay, yeah, Ralph Stucker, the fire chief, was also interested in it.
Is it something we should put on hold until you get the purchasing plan changed? Or something we should send through?
I think you could send it on to the voting session. Like I said, I think we just need to clean up the purchasing policy, possibly.
Is there other cities associated with this? Didn't you say that in the memo?
Yeah.
Kate, Sykes, and.
Kate, Jackson, Springfield, Rolla, there's, there's a whole lot of them that are members.
I think we could go ahead and workshop it, you know, that through to the 21st, and then if we need to slow it down at that point, we could just take it off if we haven't done our purchasing policy correctly.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we move item F to the voting session on August 21st.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We move on to action required items, bill number 8009. The city council will take action on ordinance to rezone property from RS2 General Residential to O1 Office Professional for future commercial use for vacant property lying east of 2,700 Katy Lane and north of 2,438 Katy Lane.
Before we start this, I have a feeling that I'm not sure about, I just don't feel comfortable voting on this tonight. There's a couple of things that have come up that I think we need to look at the ordinance to make sure that we're following the ordinance correctly. I feel like we need to table this and workshop that a little further on the next meeting.
I second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to table bill number 8009.
Does councilor see the need for that, sir, from your position?
We originally worked up this in June, and we did it based upon the P and Z request and a map that was attached to the original ordinance. The, and, and Planning and Zoning did a very good job with it, but the map that was attached at that time was a little bit ambiguous, and actually because of the photocopying was not clear, and then you've had distributed a, a good, clear, concise map of it tonight. But it varies from the actual statements and, and comments that were made at that original workshop, and some council members have gone out and physically looked at it, and I believe there was, at least on the part of some folks, a misconception that the existing tree line, which Planning and Zoning refer to as a vegetative state, is not where the actual line is, and when you look more carefully at it, it is quite a bit to the north of that, plus the ordinance does not have a specific legal description, and even though I think at this point those issues may have been cleared up in the minds of some councilmen, members, the ordinance, as I have drafted, as it sits before you tonight, could invite some future questions, litigation, and accusations of deceit or, or bait and switching. So it would be my recommendation, from my legal sense, that since this is a relatively small area, that we have a more precise legal description. The other issue that's not addressed, and don't get me wrong, I'm not being critical of Dennis Avery or the P and Z, but it refers to a permanent vegetative state, it doesn't really refer to which side of the property line that vegetative state's got to be on, and if you, if you presume a 20-foot vegetative state, particularly on the north side, on the remaining residential side, it may very well reduce that property to be an area that is marginally buildable as a residential lot. So I have, have talked to several of the council members about it. I don't think it's a long, lengthy thing, but because of, of the fact that you are proposing to rezone this, it probably needs to be a little bit more precise so that future buyers, developers will know exactly what the city's restrictions are. I'll answer any questions on that if I, if I was not clear on it.
I have a couple of questions about that. The ordinance reads that it needs to be 100 foot by 100 foot, and this property, however the maps or pictures you say may have not been the same, the numbers have all been printed on here, and it's, you know, it's got the 161.44 and 257, can't quite read, .4, I think, on there. Either one far exceed what our ordinance says that all size of a lot should be. So I mean, it would, we have had the exact numbers all the way through, from P and Z twice to here multiple times. I mean, I think it's a long time that we've had these people on hold, and that, these numbers have not changed, even though maybe the distortion of some of the maps may have. Also, our ordinance requires the 10,000 square foot, this far exceeds that with about 21,000 square foot. I would like to see us proceed with it.
We've got a motion to table it in a second. Need a roll call on that.
Councilman Smith?
No.
Councilman Davis?
No.
To table.
Yes.
Let's understand that the no is to support the motion to table, correct?
To table, that's correct. So yours was.
Wait, stop. Stop.
No, no, no. Backwards.
Yeah.
A yes supports the motion to table.
Yes, yes, sorry. Okay. And yours stays that way, correct? Yours does not, okay. Just making sure I have this right. Councilman Black? Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Councilman Crocker?
Yes.
Mayor Proton McVeigh?
No.
And Mayor DeGerris?
No.
Okay, and we have four no votes and three yes votes.
So then we proceed with reading?
Do we get different options?
No, we're back, we're just back to our agenda item.
Okay.
Yeah, no motion's been made to first read yet.
Yeah, that's what we're getting ready to do, that's what, that's what.
Does it need to be a super majority or anything on that?
No.
So entertain a motion for the first reading of bill number 8009.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Richardson?
An ordinance rezoning property located east of 2,700 Katy Lane and north of 2,438 Katy Lane from RS2 General Residential to O1 Office Professional.
Move for second reading in bill number 8009, in caption only.
Second.
Motion second for the second reading, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Richardson?
An ordinance rezoning property located east of 2,700 Katy Lane and north of 2,438 Katy Lane from RS2 General Residential to O1 Office Professional.
Move for adoption of bill number 8009 with the corrected verbiage in the ordinance.
Second.
Motion second, any questions or comments? Roll call, Mrs. Kirby.
Councilman Smith?
No.
Councilman Davis?
No.
Councilman Black?
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton?
No.
Councilman Crocker?
No.
Mayor Proton McVeigh?
Yes.
And Mayor DeGerris?
Yes.
We have three yes votes and four no votes.
Bill number 8009 does not pass. Bill number 8010, the city council will take action on ordinance approving change orders one through five, final change order in closing out the walking trails grant project.
Move for first reading, bill number 8010, in caption only.
Second.
Motion second for the first reading, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Richardson?
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a change order, numbers one through five, relating to the McLean Walking Trails Project.
Move for second reading, bill number 8010, in caption only.
Second.
Motion second for the second reading, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Richardson?
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute change orders, numbers one through five, relating to the McLean Walking Trails Project.
Move for adoption of bill number 8010.
Second.
Motion second for adoption, any questions or comments? Roll call, Mrs. Kirby.
Councilman Davis?
Which bill?
8010, changing, final, completing the change order.
Where we save the $2,000.
Yes.
Councilman Black?
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Councilman Crocker?
Yes.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Proton McVeigh?
Yes.
And Mayor DeGerris?
Yes.
Seven yes votes.
Thank you, bill number 8010 has passed. Bill number 8011, the city council will take action on ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a grant agreement with the Federal Emergency Management Agency relative to the firefighter's grant program.
Move for first reading, bill number 8011, in caption only.
Second.
Motion second, first reading, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Richardson?
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a grant agreement between the city of Popper Bluff and the Federal Emergency Management Administration for firefighting equipment for the Popper Bluff Fire Department.
Move for second reading, bill number 8011, in caption only.
Second.
Motion second for the second reading, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Richardson?
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a grant agreement between the city of Popper Bluff and the Federal Emergency Management Administration for firefighting equipment for the Popper Bluff Fire Department.
Motion for adoption.
Second.
Motion second to adopt, any questions or comments? Roll call, Mrs. Kirby.
Councilman Black?
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Councilman Crocker?
Yes.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Proton McVeigh?
Yes.
And Mayor DeGerris?
Yes.
We have seven yes votes.
Thank you, bill number 8011 has passed. Bill number 8012, the city council will take action on ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a contract for administrative services between the city of Popper Bluff and Ozark Foothills Regional Planning Commission to administer the firefighter's grant.
Motion for first reading, caption only of 8012.
Second.
Motion second for first reading, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Richardson?
An ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of Popper Bluff, Missouri, to execute a contract for professional services between the city of Popper Bluff and Ozark Foothills Regional Planning Commission for the administration of the firefighter's grant.
Motion for second reading of 8012.
Second.
Motion second for the second reading, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Richardson?
An ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of Popper Bluff, Missouri, to execute a contract for professional services between the city of Popper Bluff and Ozark Foothills Regional Planning Commission for the administration of the firefighter's grant.
Move for adoption of bill number 8012.
Second.
Motion second for adoption, any questions or comments? Roll call, Mrs. Kirby.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Councilman Crocker?
Yes.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Black?
Yes.
Mayor Proton McVeigh?
Yes.
And Mayor DeGerris?
Yes.
Seven yes votes.
Thank you, bill number 8012 has passed. Bill number 8013, the city council will take action on ordinance approving a conditional use permit to operate a drive-through lanes for a proposed banking business within a C2 general commercial district where property located 2910 Barron Road.
Move for first reading of bill number 8013 by caption only.
Second.
Motion second, first reading, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Richardson?
An ordinance granting a conditional use permit to First Missouri State Bank to permit the use of drive-through windows for banking services at 2910 Barron Road in Poplar Bluff.
Motion for second reading.
Second.
Motion second for the second reading, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Richardson?
An ordinance granting a conditional use permit to First Missouri State Bank to permit the use of drive-through windows for banking services at the, at 2910 Barron Road in Poplar Bluff.
Move for adoption of bill number 8013.
Second.
Motion second for adoption, any questions or comments? Roll call Mrs. Kirby.
Councilman Crocker?
Yes.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Black?
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Mayor Proton McVeigh?
Yes.
And Mayor DeGerris?
Yes.
We have seven yes votes.
Thank you, bill number 8013 has passed. Bill number 8014, the City Council will take action on an ordinance amending ordinance number 7623 relative to personnel regulations for city employees.
Move for first reading of bill number 8014 by caption only.
Second.
Motion second, first reading, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Richardson?
An ordinance amending the Poplar Bluff Ordinance, number 7623, section 120.060, regarding residency requirements for Poplar Bluff municipal employees.
Motion for second reading, caption only.
Second.
Motion second, second reading, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Richardson?
An ordinance amending the Poplar Bluff Ordinance, number 7623, section 120.060, regarding residency requirements for Poplar Bluff municipal employees.
Move for adoption of bill number 8014.
Second.
Motion second to adopt, any questions or comments? Roll call Mrs. Kirby.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Black?
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Councilman Crocker?
Yes.
Mayor Proton McVeigh?
Yes.
And Mayor DeGerris?
Yes.
We have seven yes votes.
Thank you, bill number 8014 has passed. Bill number 8015, the City Council will take action on an ordinance amending an agreement between the City of Poplar Bluff and Tantalus Systems Incorporated.
Motion for first reading, 8015, caption only.
Second.
Motion second for the first reading, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Richardson?
An ordinance amending ordinance number 778, 7781, to include Tantalus Systems, Inc., as an additional contracting party, along with Annexter, Inc., for metering services for the Poplar Bluff Utilities Department.
Move for second reading of bill number 8015, caption only.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That was second reading?
Yeah.
We're going to redo that second reading. I thought we could... Motion for adoption?
We need a second reading.
Well, I thought that's what we just did.
No, that was the first reading.
I'm lost. Okay.
It's okay, a good reading, it's been motioned and seconded and approved. Mr. Richardson?
An ordinance amending ordinance number 7781 to include Tantalus Systems, Inc., as an additional contracting party, along with Annexter, Inc., for metering services for the Poplar Bluff Utilities Department.
Move for adoption of bill number 8015.
I don't think he wants to read it again.
Motion second for adoption, any questions or comments? Roll call Mrs. Kirby.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Black?
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Councilman Crocker?
Yes.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Proton McVeigh?
Yes.
And Mayor DeGerris?
Yes.
We have seven yes votes.
Thank you, bill number 8015 has passed. Sorry about that.
Same here.
We just want to make sure we understood it.
I just want him to say that word again.
Okay. City councils, the City Council of Poplar Bluff will meet in a closed meeting, which they will discuss such matters that are exempt under the open meeting law, section 610.021.1, .2, .3, .9, .11, .12, .13, and .14, the revised statutes of Missouri.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion, we move into closed session after the city manager's report.
Second.
Motion second. Roll call Mrs. Kirby.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Councilman Crocker?
Yes.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Black?
Yes.
Mayor Proton McVeigh?
Yes.
And Mayor DeGerris?
Yes.
We have seven yes votes.
Thank you. Ask again?
Just a couple of things, I think finally we were caught up on keeping cemetery mode in the rideaways, thanks to no rain for three weeks, that actually helped. Today, at the Chamber of Commerce luncheon, Senator Leibler, Speaker Todd Richardson, and Congressman Jason Smith were all there, kind of telling us what went on in Jeff City and Washington, DC. After that, Congressman Smith visited Canyon Creek Sod Farm out in Butler County, owned by the Williams family. It's always nice that they take interest in our local economy and businesses. Other than tomorrow's election day, I'd appreciate if everybody got out and vote, and that's about all I have.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.